Good evening. I'd like to thank you all for being here this evening to the Cedar Falls Board of Education meeting. I'd like to call this meeting to order with a reminder that the actions taken will focus on our students and their achievement. With that, Dr. Patty is going to show a PowerPoint before we start the public hearing.
Yes, this is the presentation that we shared last meeting with everybody here for the board meeting, as well as those in the audience. Just wanted to run through that real quick, once again, just to give everybody some background information before we start the public hearing. As everybody knows, we've had conversations for quite a while on land acquisition. Through the conversations, the board have asked several different questions, as you can see up on the screen at this time. Those questions really focus on the future. As we look not only short term but long term, what are some comparisons that are out there? What are the opportunities for partnership, exploration of our current capacity, as well as the future needs as we go into the future? Two board meetings ago, we had our demographer back to be able to talk about enrollment increases. And we've had this group with us now for multiple years. And you can see, we are growing, and growing pretty rapidly, which is exciting for the school district and in our region. You can see that over time with our secondary enrollment projections, they have been extremely accurate, going back seven years, knowing that they really focus on a scientific process to be able to determine the number of students that we'll have. These are hard to see with the numbers, but by 2019, '20, our high school's projected to be over enrollment, and we know that that number is going to increase over time. We also know that our elementary projections are multiple buildings that are currently over capacity, but certainly are going to be as we look to the future, even when we do add a building and then make the necessary adjustments to North Cedar and to Orchard Hill. We know that that current enrollment and the trend lines that we have are just going to continue to bring students to the Cedar Falls Community School District. So, previous information that we've talked about, and this has been out there for several different years. We know we have to do something with our high school. We know that there is, needs to be an investment to make sure that we have the educational spaces necessary to continue to move forward with what needs to be provided for students in this day and age, and especially as we look to the future. We do know that the current high school sits on roughly 17 acres. And to be able to remodel that building, to bring it up to the educational standards that we know are in place across the state, across the country, across the world in many aspects, it's going to cost about $60 million. We do know that that's roughly about a 15-year solution, because within 15 years, we will be at capacity within even that renovated building, that building that we could add on to. And after that timeframe, there are really no educational sound additions that can be done. That's going to really be beneficial for students long-term on that site. So, as we look to the future, we do know that to build a new high school, it would be between 80 and 85 million. Studies have shown we need at least 50 acres of land. And again, we want to make sure that we are exploring the best lifecycle costs and most efficient use of dollars. And as a comparison, I know we talked about this recently, the Waukees Schools in the city of Waukees recently just purchased jointly 160 acres of site, or land for a new high school site, which would be their second high school within the city of Waukees. I think one of the things that really has helped the district is to think long-term, futuristic in nature. And I think that kind of serves us well, as we are now going to build a new elementary on land that was purchased roughly nine years ago jointly with the city as well. So, that's extremely beneficial. So, as we talked about last time, and I'm going through these things pretty quickly, however, we did talk about this fairly extensively in the past. We did look at the land on the corner of Hudson and Green Hill. That's roughly 50 acres of land. It just recently sold in April of 2016 for $86,000 per acre. It was just not economically feasible for us as a district to be able to purchase that land. We've looked at the mall. That's come up in several conversations. However, it's cost prohibitive to acquire, renovate. Also, the mall itself sits on 31.46 acres, which is below the 50 acres that's recommended through the studies that we've taken on and undertaken as a district. We also know that that would eliminate several strong and growing commercial sites, and certainly harm our overall taxable valuation and prosperity that we have within our community as a growing district. We've also explored and looked at the Sartori Hospital site, if and when that becomes available here in the future. However, that site is on 17.63 acres of land. It's also very cost prohibitive to remodel, and very much landlocked. And even if you do add that to the current high school site, it's roughly about 34 acres in size, which is below the 50 acres, and about four blocks away as well. Then we've looked outside of the city limits. We've looked at several different options. However, the, it becomes very challenging and cost prohibitive when you start looking at the cost for utilities and the distance to be able to run utilities. And certainly, we want to look at transportation and walkability of a site, which, the site that we are holding a public hearing under tonight certainly provides that. We also have to be cognizant of our district boundaries. A lot of people have said, or have mentioned during public forums or other public meetings, how about if we go off of Highway 20? But Highway 20 is not in the Cedar Falls School District. So, that is cost prohibitive and not legal, because it's not within our school district. So, what we are proposing is to purchase 50 acres to the west of UNI. And it's west of the dome, and it's going to be an area that we know is going to be a high area for expansion and future growth. Provides some opportunities, as we've talked about now fairly extensively. Comparison, $86,000 per acre for Green Hill and Hudson Road, we're looking at $24,800 per acre. And in fact, $500,000 is going straight to green spaces, intermural spaces, PE spaces, joint-use spaces. So, in fact, that's dollars that would be spent in the future. So, when you exclude that, it comes down to about $14,800 per acre for land. And it's money that, again, is, for the value of acreage, especially 50 acres, within the Cedar Falls city limits, as we know is a tremendous opportunity for us, short-term and long-term. One of the other things that I, we really didn't go deeply into last time, but there is an escalator clause in this as well. So, I know there's been some people that have mentioned, well, why invest in infrastructure right now? Similar to elementary land, it, sometimes it takes time to be able to see that land come to fruition. But if down the road, all of a sudden, we say, well, it's not going to be something that we would be able to use, or might not be feasible, there is a consumer price index inflationary clause that would allow us then to either, A, sell that back to UNI, or sell that in a different arena or a different area. So, with how much we currently generate off of our investments, we know that this consumer price index will be much higher return on investment than it would be even in a bank. So, payment for this, how does this look? We know that this is not a tax increase, or a property tax increase. It's paid out of our statewide one-cent sales tax. We've really conservatively budgeted for this purchase over time, the last two and a half to three years. We can prepay it without any penalty, and there's no interest charge for purchasing this land. The intent would be to spend $620,000 at closing. And then, over the course of the next two years, on March 31st, 2018, expend $310,000, and then in 2009, $310,000. In fact, we do have the ability to pay this at once, but we think over time just allows much easier with our cash flows to have those dollars reserved. Future. This was a future growth planning map that we had from our demographer. They spent a lot of time working with developers, working with the city, working with Blackhawk County. And the red star, kind of in the bottom left-hand side quadrant of this map, that is the area that we are discussing for the 50 acres of land. Yellow areas, the bright yellow areas are growth areas that they anticipate being built out within the next five years. And we know, talking with developers, those are lands that we anticipate being mostly residential. And the purple, within that five-to-10-year timeframe, and those purple areas, again, can be combination residential and/or mixed commercial use. So, we see that expansion continuing to go in a westward pattern. And that's certainly true because of some of the other development that we anticipate and work that we anticipate as we work with the city. One of the largest future considerations is the Green Hill Road extension. And that is going to be done this upcoming summer, and that's going to come out directly south of the land that we are recommending for purchase. So, if you look at the top of this map, just west of the N, of north, that would be the area of the 50 acres that we are discussing. And Green Hill Road, which here runs kind of north-south, crosses University Avenue, that connects with Hudson on the far south side, bottom side of this map, will be a major thoroughfare, which will allow great traffic flow through this site. We know that this is a tremendous opportunity for deeper collaboration with UNI, as we look at joint spaces, efficient spaces, potential joint use of collab, green spaces, as well as potential parking lots and other aspects. But we also know that we want to focus on efficiency environmentally with ability to have students that could walk, ride, and have greater accessibility. That's why our recommendation for this was, again, to move forward with the purchase of this price and set a public hearing for this evening. So...
All right.
I guess questions from the board before we start the public hearing? I went through that quickly, but it's information that we've gone over pretty extensively in the past.
Thank you. Thank you for doing that. I have in my possession an affidavit, a publication, showing that the notice of time and place of hearing for the purchase of property from University of, from the University of Northern Iowa. This notice was published in the Waterloo Cedar Falls Courier on January 27th, 2017. The board will now hold a hearing. If there is anyone that would like to speak on behalf of this, if you will come to the podium and give us your name and address, you have three minutes to speak. Kind of first come, first served.
Hello, my name is Lisa Sevcek, and I live at 1421 Clay Street. I understand we're not discussing building a new school at this time, but the land acquisition. And I'm rising neither in support or opposition of a new high school. However, my concern is to address the current high school site if a new school is eventually built. I question the wisdom of purchasing the land if there is not a concrete proposal that addresses the current high school site. The only idea I have heard to date is to move the district offices to the building. The building is much too big for our district offices. I question if the school should not have discussions with the developer, and the possibility of subdividing the parcel into nice lots for families. You know, maybe put a really beautiful boulevard down from 12th Street to 8th Street, for instance. That may or may not be an unrealistic alternative, but I think perhaps those conversations should take place before we get too far into the process. Hopefully, those conversations have already been held. But I cannot think of a worse drag on a bond referendum than to have all of the neighborhood vote against it, because having a new school will take their school out of the neighborhood and what will happen to that neighborhood. I remember when we were building, or talking about our new Lincoln School, and that was like 10 years ago, and we were really scared what would happen if our current Lincoln School wasn't built at that site, what would happen to our neighborhood. So, have there been any substantial conversations concerning the cost to tear down the old school and the ability to get a land developer to purchase the current high school? Secondly, I question if people will simply trust the statement that we will not let it turn into an eyesore, because if you drive around to the back of our current high school, it already is an eyesore. And if we are going to pass a referendum, that would be great, but otherwise, the board should look to what it currently has and not let our current high school deteriorate anymore than it already is. So, in conclusion, I do think the board has an obligation to the neighborhood, and if it does not want to take that obligation seriously, then I don't think it can expect people to vote for the new referendum. Thank you.
Thank you, Lisa.
Yes, thank you.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak?
I'm Bob Cressley, 2511 Garden Avenue, Cedar Falls. I have one major question, and I haven't heard anybody in town, and maybe I'm the only one. But how do you think kids are going to get to your school? Hudson Road and 27th is going to be what? It is going to be what? A major congestion, major problem for college students that are walking? So, tell me how you think people are, kids, children, adults, high school, whatever, whatever you, okay, high school students, how are they going to get to school? That's all I can say right now.
Thank you, Bob.
Thank you.
Anyone else that would like to speak?
Hi there, I'm Chris Hansen. I live at 13011 University Avenue, and I'd like to speak in support of the site. I think there's about three points I'd like to make. I think that the board has done a really good job, and I think as the city, we have a good opportunity trying to work with UNI. And there's a lot of the kids at the high school now that are taking UNI classes. And, you know, some people, I mean, the previous gentleman, I think, is correct. You know, we are going to have to address things like congestion and things like that. But if we have 50 acres to work with, we should be able to get the buses and the cars and things like that off the street. But working with UNI, I think it's a wise use of tax money. And the thing that I really like is I think you're being wise with the funds. You know, we talked, Andy talked about, you know, the solution, and that this would give us a, you know, probably a 50-year-plus solution, where that if we were to fix up the high school, which, I went to the high school, and I liked the high school, and that sounds good, but, you know, the idea that it's only a 15-year solution, I don't think that's a wise use of our tax funds. So, I would, I would be in support of it. I think it's a wise use of funds, and I think you've done a good job.
Good evening, good board members. Larry Wykoff, 4241 East Park Road, Cedar Falls, Iowa. Well, here we go again. I sent my comments here to Pat Keeney, but I didn't know Andrew would be here. So, here's my talking points for opposition to the 1.24 million land purchase agreement or discussion. How can we legally be buying land when no authority has been granted by the citizens to build an $80 million high school on it? You've got the cart before the horse. This is a classic definition that all kids need to remember for the rest of their lives. 50 acres west of UNI versus 17 acres currently in use since my days in 1970. That's a 300% increase in land mass, when the student population is only projected to increase approximately 26% from 1,138 now to 1,440. That is completely out of line, and I'd be walked off my job if I made the same proposal at work. Plus, on 10 January, Andrew over here wrote an article about consultant RSP and Associates projected smaller numbers to be growing in the Cedar Falls School District. How can you be knocking your own analysts? With the new administration, this is a very important point, vouchers will be increasingly allowed to permit parents to teach their kids. That will result in a net reduction in students and a net reduction in income to school districts. If that happens, ladies and gentlemen, our taxes will be going up to make up the difference. As discovered in the previous defeated referendum, parents don't want their teenage students up near the college environment. That was a main reason, I was told, they voted against the high school up near UNI. As a product of 1970, a class of 472 graduates, my high school is not overcrowded, and RSP is simply scaring people with their projections. Aren't we also at the legal PEPAL and other bonding limits in the city? We've got to be getting awful close. And speaking of PEPAL, we were told that the 1.26% tax increase would be slowly rising on us citizens to 2%. I couldn't find that exactly, but I know it's in the paper somewhere. That's a 58% increase in taxes, ladies and gentlemen.
Larry, Larry, excuse me, you need to wrap this up.
I am. I got two more sentences.
Okay.
If this is such a great deal, why doesn't the city buy the land, rezone it, and subdivide it for housing development? Cedar Falls should not buy land for a high school that has yet to be steadfastly justified. Thank you.
Thank you, Larry. Anyone else that would like to speak?
Jim Moody, 1702 Walnut Street. What I'd like to address is the, just the idea of prudent planning. For 12 years, I sat behind that desk on planning and zoning. We made a lot of land purchases that really did not have plans for today, but it was about saving money today on tomorrow's purchase. Like was stated here, we have an opportunity down the road, if the land is not used, to dispose of it and actually make money on that. Recently, the board refinanced our bonds, which saved the district a considerable amount of money. The bids have come in for the new elementary school and the renovations, very, very near to what the estimates were. You've shown your responsibility fiscally for that way. In order to plan for the future, I mean, if I could get that deal to buy 50 acres out there for $1.2 million with no interest over a payable term, I would take that in a heartbeat. I don't think anyone in this room would not take an opportunity on a zero-interest loan with an opportunity to sell it down the road at a gain. I mean, to me, that's, that's good business. So, I just want to thank the board for taking their time, doing their due diligence. Even if we don't need or build a high school tomorrow, or five years down the road, the site of the current elementary school, we've held for, I think, nine years before it came into use, it's prudent planning. You have to plan for the future, but in order to do that, you have to do that today, because that same piece of ground, nine years from now, might not be available. You know, when the existing high school was built, it was hayfields behind it. When I talked to the people that were part of that, their biggest mistake was, and they'll flat-out tell you, we didn't buy enough land. We had the opportunity, but we didn't take advantage of it. So, here's our opportunity to correct past mistakes today as we move forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. Is there anyone else that would like to speak? Hearing none. We're going to close the hearing. There will be no action taken at this meeting. We will come back next board meeting to discuss this and take action. So, thank you all for your comments. We greatly appreciate that. And now, we're going to move on to the consent agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
It's been moved by Susan. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's seconded by Jim. Any questions regarding the consent agenda? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Thank you. Moving on to public comment, this was the public comment. Did we have any, okay?
We do not, no. We do not have any public comment.
All right, thank you. Moving on to item E on the agenda communications, and we have Julie Jorgensen with us this evening to talk to us about activities at the high school. Julie, just for, just so that, those that are in the audience, I want you to know that she is the student representative that represents the high school. And she comes every board meeting and shares information about what's going on in the life of our students. So, Julie, thank you.
Thank you so much. So, this week, the moment we've all been waiting for, Dance Marathon will be held this Friday. For those who don't know, Cedar Falls High School is teaming up with UNI, and they're doing our annual Dance Marathon. And so, we are collecting money and fundraising for the Iowa Children's Hospital and for children with pediatric cancer, and our goal is $4,000. Right now, I'm not sure exactly our total, but we are, we're getting pretty close. But if anyone would still like to donate, we still have our donation site up, and I have it on my social media, and I could probably share it so everyone can, in town, can see it. So, last weekend, we had our Coaches vs. Cancer basketball game in honor of Will Reiner. We had an excellent turnout, and just, we played very well for such a wonderful cause, and it was, pardon me, it was such a wonderful day to be a Tiger, and just being in the audience, or being in the crowd, and knowing that we were all there for the same reason, felt really good. This upcoming week, men's wrestling will be headed to state, Thursday through Saturday in Des Moines. Good luck to all the athletes competing. And that is it as of right now. Second semester's going well at the high school. Thank you so much.
Julie, how'd your prom dress thing go on Saturday?
It went well. That was also with UNI, so I know they got most of the benefits, the most of the proceeds from that, but otherwise, I think it went well, so.
Good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Julie.
Under communications, this is an opportunity for district staff to provide communication to the full board, or provide comments regarding questions that have arisen during the public hearing. So, Dr. Patty is going to visit with us.
Yeah, just a couple items, and just as a response to some of the comments that we heard during the public hearing, I think it was Lisa that talked about the current high school, and that's certainly something that we know is important. I think we had that question that arose two weeks ago, or it might have been four weeks ago, working with developers, working with other individuals within our community, the Chamber Alliance. I think that is going to be very important to talk about the current high school site that that land sits on, the building sits on, and what that use will be. So, we agree wholeheartedly with that, and have talked a little bit about that as a board, and we know that that's going to be important as we look to the future. I think there was a comment by Larry that talked about college students around high school students, and I think we've shared this, this was a meet, or a conversation that came up with the board a while ago as well. We have over 600 college students each and every year that come into our buildings, and they are there for Level Ones, Level Twos, Level Threes, their experiences. They also come in to volunteer. So, we have a large number of students right now that interact on a daily basis with our high school students, which is very exciting. And we know that's a collaborative venture, as well as a learning opportunity for those students. So, we know that there's some questions, and certainly, we understand that there's going to be some additional planning that needs to take place. And this is purchasing of the land for the future focus, but certainly not tied into building a high school, certainly today, tomorrow, hopefully certainly down the road as we look to the future. So, just wanted to respond to that and make sure everybody had that information.
Thank you. Moving on to item F on the agenda, approval of the substantial completion of Southdale Portable Classroom. Doug Nisker, thank you.
That would be me. And if you want to pull the PowerPoint up on the screen, we can finally bring to the board the substantial completion for the portable classroom and the groundwork that was installed at Southdale Elementary last summer. As you can see, the total budget for the project was $279,175. We did have some allowances built into the original budget that we did not need, so when we subtract those off, we ended up with a net cost of $258,442, or just a little short of $21,000 under budget. Project went reasonably well. As always, when you're doing summer projects, you scramble a little bit in August, but we were able to complete the building in time for the students and staff to use that and start a school last fall. And I'm just waiting on some warranty paperwork that recently came in, and so we're ready for, to present this to the board for your acceptance and of the project.
Again, this is due to our enrollment growth, as we've seen as a district, and certainly needed this for the lack of space that we have at the elementary level. needed this for the, the lack of space that we have at the elementary level. Our hope is that as we now have the successful bond that passed, that we no longer will need portables at our elementary, but certainly as we look at capacity challenges at the secondary, those, those could be back before us in the future.
And Doug, remind me, I think we, we bought this unit versus leasing this unit, right? It was going to be about a third of the cost to lease it versus, and if that number's not correct, then, then correct me.
We had originally anticipated we would need that portable unit for two years, and so we asked for a lease on the portable. And the price difference between the lease and the actual purchase price, I believe, was in that $12,000 to $15,000 range. So our recommendation at the time was to purchase the unit, which the board did agree to do, and we do have plans to move that portable to one of our secondary schools at the end of next school year when it will no longer be needed at Southdale.
And what do you estimate is our, so we've spent about $110,000 installing this there, and?
Just about $110,000 to install it, correct.
$110,000 to install, so how much will it cost to remove and place it at a secondary, like the high school, for example?
North of $110,000.
I was going to say, because it's got to be, if, if all things are equal, there's got to be a cost to take it out, restore the land and everything else.
We estimate a little over $100,000 every time we have to move a portable.
To be able to set and place a portable, and that's money that, again, we'd rather spend on the, the other infrastructure needs, but when you look at, you know, the investment on doing a renovation in one classroom versus what does the lifecycle cost for that, this is money that we would rather not spend on portables.
And just remind me, where does those funds come from? Which particular bucket?
We take the, we've been using physical plant and equipment levy funds for this, and you are right, in order to meet the City of Cedar Falls building requirements, we have to have a full foundation, we have to sewer, water, all the things that we need to have to make the building functional, and it's pretty been pretty consistent. A double unit like that, or a two-classroom unit like that, runs about $100,000 every time we set one up.
Nothing more, I mean, I, I can't say anything other than just the frustration of the money that, that get, that we won't ever get back out of that, and so, but anyway, that's, the sooner we have our capacity issues solved with the new elementary, the better.
Yes.
Good questions. Anyone else have any questions? Hearing none, do I have a motion?
I move that the Cedar Falls Community School District Board of Education accept as complete the 2016 Southdale Elementary Portable Classroom and Portable Classroom Foundation Projects. All claims for materials furnished, labor performed, and our services provided on this contract must be filed within the next 30 days.
Thank you, Jeff. Do we have a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion or questions? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Thank you. Moving on again to item G, approval of the Cedar Heights Entrance Project Bid. Doug?
I would like to introduce Dan Chandler from Structure Architects, and he will go through the bids received for the upcoming project.
Good evening, everyone. Good to be here again tonight. So February 7th, we received bids from three different contractors. Everyone was in compliance on the, for the requirements, and the low bid came from Kitter Construction at $167,285, and that is who we are recommending that you award the contract to. That number was $1,015 below the budget that we had put together.
As we've talked in the past, this then allows all of our elementary buildings, as well as the 10-year highs, besides Orchard Hill and North Cedar, which will be renovated, added onto, and have those secure entrances. To have that entrance where anybody coming from our public or visiting the building will have to go through the office to check in before they have access to the rest of the building. So this brings up that entryway to the level of expectation, safety, and security that we have in, in the other buildings. So we, we certainly are excited by this and know it's going to help the building immensely.
Great.
Thank you, Dan. Do I have a motion to approve the Cedar Heights Entrance Project Bid?
So moved.
It's been moved by Susan. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been seconded by Jim. Any other discussion or questions? Yes, Jeff?
This is in the 10-year PEPAL plan that was put together in the fall, right?
It was, it was a one-year delay from a last year, from last summer to this summer, and we talked about that, you know, December of '15, and so it's just a rollover from that, but yes, it was a part of the plan.
Good, good question. Thank you. Any others, questions? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to item H, approval of Aldridge Elementary Food Service Equipment Bid.
And again, Dan is with us and will go over the bids. This is the other part of the Aldridge Elementary School project. We did not bring this at the last meeting, and it's my fault and the excitement of bringing the other bids to you. I fumbled the ball on this one a little bit, but this would be for the kitchen equipment for Aldridge Elementary, and as you can, I'll let Dan kind of go through the rest of it.
Okay, so, thank you, Doug. So we received five bids for that work with, the original estimate was $317,000. So Rapids Food Service out of Marion, Iowa, was the low, which has provided, I believe, Doug, equipment for the district in the past.
And I have used them in a previous school district I was at, and they were a very reputable firm.
So as you can see, we had pretty good interest from as far away as Fargo, North Dakota, so we were pretty pleased with, with those bids, and we would recommend that you proceed with Rapids Food Service for $270,000.
Do I have a motion to approve the food service contract?
So moved.
It's been moved by Jim. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Jenny. Any discussion or questions?
Just a quick question, funding for this, this comes out of the bond?
It's a combination of, some of this will come out of the bond, some of this will come out of the food service budget, and a little bit that's going to come out of the PEPAL budget. So it's a three-legged stool that's going to put this together.
Good question, Suzy. Anybody else have a question?
We, we expanded this again due to our capacity to be a modified serving kitchen, just because we have central kitchens that busts food, and, and for efficiency, size, and capacity, this is going to be a modified serving kitchen, which is going to be beneficial for the rest of the district and for students.
Correct.
Thank you. Do I, do I have a motion to, I have a motion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dan. Moving on to the approval of the Summer 2017 Roofing Project Bid.
Okay, and this is the last one of the bids for this evening. Pitch hitting for Daryl Smith, the engineer, tonight. We had requested bids for the replacement of three sections of roof at Hanson Elementary this summer. We did receive four bids, and you can see that our recommendation is to accept a low quote from Service Roofing at Waterloo, Iowa, for a total cost with re-roof and some other minor repairs of $107,179. This is significantly less than the original budgeted amount, and we have, Service Roofing has done many roof projects for the district in the past, and obviously very satisfied with their work and would recommend their acceptance of their bid. We will use 2017-18 school year physical plant and equipment levy funds for this project. It is a part of the 10-year PEPAL.
Part of the 10-year PEPAL, and we also have a roof replacement cycle cost within our district to make sure that our roofs have the preventative maintenance necessary and also have the upkeep necessary. So that's just a lifecycle expenditure that we have built into our PEPAL plan.
That's for this summer?
This summer, correct. And those are over the old section of Hanson, so they've been there for, that's.
Since the middle '70s.
Yes. It's a area of the roof that.
So all of Hanson will have a new roof then, after this summer?
I think there's two sections still that would be either far south on that southern part of the building that still has, within the 10-year plan, that would be replaced.
That would be very good. My briefing was well-received.
Any, do I have a motion to approve the Summer Roofing Project?
I move accept the Service Roofing Bid for the roofing for Hanson.
Thank you, Jim. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded by Suzy. Any other discussion or questions?
Doug, what was the original estimate for this one? Do you remember? Sorry, not to put you on the.
It was almost $200,000, if I remember correctly.
Really? And we got it at $107?
Mm-hmm. It was substantially less. We were looking at bids in more in the $175 range, I believe, and we've been pretty lucky lately with that, with the last few years, roofing projects. Great people that we've been working with, a lot of local folks, and, and they've been very aggressive in the pricing to the district.
Any other questions? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Thank you. Moving on to item J on the agenda, set a public hearing for the 2017-2018 school year calendar.
Yes, as board members know, this is always an exciting time of year when we set our calendars, and always one of my favorite time of, of years, just because you can never set a calendar that meets everybody's needs and everybody feels, feels positive and happy about. But certainly, this is, it takes a lot of the guesswork out of it anymore because of the legislative inaction that took place two years ago that talks about that we cannot set a date prior to August 23rd. We've worked very closely with a lot of the Cedar Valley schools. I believe, in fact, Waterloo is, is acting on their calendar tonight to start on August 24th. Our recommendation is to start on August 24th as well, as well as the Cedar Valley Catholic Schools. You can see by the, the calendar, and, and we don't, I don't think have a visual for this, but very similar calendar, calendar to what we have this school year with corresponding dates. We would start on a Thursday, August 24th. This year, we started on Thursday, August 23rd. The last day of school would be on May 30th, which would be a Wednesday. We would have the corresponding spring breaks, which is the same spring break as UNI, as well as Hawkeye Community College, with the, the other breaks corresponding to this year's calendar. What we're requesting, it's one of the new aspects of the Iowa Code legislative inaction two years ago, that we have to hold a public hearing for this, so we would recommend setting a public hearing for the February 27th board meeting for a, our school calendar for the 2017-18 school year.
Thank, thank you. Go ahead, Jeff.
This is on the website, right?
It should be underneath all the board documents, because it's included in our board packet, but we'll post it on our front splash page, too.
Okay. No, as a, as a parent figuring out when Christmas break and spring break and.
Always nice to have it set here within this timeframe so people can plan accordingly. It's so important.
And will you talk about the built-in, not built-in, snow days? Because there were questions this year. I got questions about that.
Yes, and we don't have built-in snow days with our professional development days built in and where they, they fall at. So if any inclement weather days, knock-on wood flood days, those would be added to the end of the year and knock-on wood. Hopefully, we won't have those, but we live in Iowa, so we probably will.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Hearing none, do we have a motion?
We do, and Doug, I just want to make sure that March should be February. Yes, before I read it.
It should be February, correct.
I move that the Cedar Falls Community School District Board of Education approve February 27th, 2017, at 7:00 PM as the date and time to hold a public hearing for the 2017-2018 school year calendar.
Thank you, Jenny. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank, thank you, Jeff. Any other discussion regarding the calendar? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Thank you. All right, moving on to the superintendent's report.
Couple items, and this one's not on the agenda, but April 10th is the board, the first board meeting in April. There is a conflict on that night, as we've worked with Channel 15. That is the All-City Vocal Concert night. They can only livestream one event at a time, so we're having a board meeting that night. They livestreamed the concert into the auditorium for overflow seating, and it's air-conditioned and more comfortable for people. So as long as there's no opposition, we'll have our board meeting here, it'll be taped, then it'll show at 9:30 that night, and then follow all the other replays, just because of the livestreaming for the All-City Vocal Concert. So as long as there's no concerns with that, everybody's going, it's still a public meeting, everybody can come, it's going to be videotaped, it's going to be shown on Channel 15 multiple times, as we do now, but it just won't be livestreamed because of the All-City Vocal Concert.
Could we have that livestreamed in here so we could watch the concert?
It would be tremendous to be able to do an outstanding jihad, but, no.
Okay. Let's check in, just check in.
Can we still livestream on YouTube at, like we used to, or?
We might be able to do that, but we'd have to set up a different, that little camera, so it wouldn't be very clear, but that's something we might be able to do. Yep, so we can check into that.
Well, we do, yeah, we do have livestreaming right now. You can pick it up on the internet, right?
Yes, but it just won't be shown on Channel 15 at live, so we start at 7 o'clock, and then it'll be taped delayed, and it'll start airing at 9:30.
Gotcha.
Because of the livestreaming of the All-City Vocal Concert.
Gotcha, okay.
The other item that I have down besides ones listed, UEN Advocacy Day is Wednesday, so I know Joyce is going down, there's a few community members that are going down, so anybody else that'd be interested in joining us, just let me know. Then you can see a couple of the upcoming meeting dates, February 27th. We have a few items on the agenda with workshop model, work session, and then closed session. Then March 27th, we will start the discussion with our preliminary budget.
And is the March 27th meeting the only meeting we have in March?
It is. With spring break and we set the, the calendar, that is the only meeting in March.
So if you decide to come that second Tuesday, or second Monday in March, just know we won't be here. So, all right. Any questions or comments or concerns from the board?
The only question I had, Joyce, is I know with that February 27th meeting, we usually try and, I mean, we've kind of pushed the mid-year evaluation just because we knew we had long nights, and now we've scheduled that work session before, so it's, and we have an information report, I think, that night as well, so that's turning into a pretty long night.
I don't think we, Dr. Patey and I talked about it, and we don't really want to kick it down the road any farther, so we'll just see how late the board meeting goes and.
And we're hopeful that's not going to be a terribly extensive board meeting as we look at the agenda.
Yeah.
So that would be the hope.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes.
I want to plug the Cedar Falls School Foundation. The foundation is celebrating its 10th anniversary, and we're having a celebration for education on February 25th, which is a Saturday, from 6:30 to 9:30, at the Hilton Garden Inn. We have, the Brazilian Twins are going to be performing, we have a live castration. We would just invite all of you to attend. Tickets are available, ticket or admission is available online through the district or tickets at the door. $25.
Thank you, Suzy. Anything else?
The last thing I'd like to say is, I know several of us sitting up here and in the audience attended the legislative forum that was, the education was the focus this past Saturday, so I just encourage people to be aware of those, regardless of how you feel on either side of the aisle or either side of an issue. It's a great opportunity. Our legislators do take time to show up and listen to your comments and questions, so it's an exciting time, I think, in our country right now. Lots of people are getting involved and sharing their voice, and so it's just a great opportunity for all of us to be able to have a communication and start a relationship with the people who represent us. So thank you for everyone who went, and.
Good comment, Jenny. Thank you. Anything else to come before the board? Hearing none, do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Then moved by Susan.
Second.
And second by Jeff. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. We are adjourned. Thank you.
Yeah, thanks for coming.